Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our Capitola City Council meeting. Before we get started, I mentioned the purpose of closing for a few words.
Thank you, Mayor Brooks. Hello and welcome to the Capitola City Council meeting. In accordance with the current Santa Cruz County Health Order and the Governor's Executive Order N 2920, this meeting is not physically open to the public. Council and staff are meeting via Zoom, and there are several ways for the public to watch and participate. Information on how to join the meeting using Zoom or a landline mobile phone, along with how to submit public comments during the meeting tonight, is available on our website, cityofcapitola.org, on the slides now shown, and on the published meeting agenda. As always, this meeting is cable cast live on Charter Communications Cable TV Channel 8 and is being recorded to be rebroadcast on the following Wednesday at 8:00 a.m. and on Saturday, following the first rebroadcast at 1:00 p.m. on Charter Channel 71 and Comcast Channel 25. Meetings can also be viewed live from the city's website. Our technician tonight is Walter, and I will turn this back to you. Thank you.
Okay, so we're gonna go ahead, um, to item one of the people.
Yes, Councilmember Bertrand. Councilmember Kaiser. Councilmember Peterson. Vice Mayor Story. Mayor Brooks.
Thank you. Um, if you could please join me in the presence of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, now we're gonna move on to item two, presentation. And this is item two eight, the introduction of our new employee, Senior Mechanic, Gabe.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you very much. I'm very excited to introduce Gabe Kudzik, the city's new senior mechanic. Gabe started working with us in late December, which provided him an opportunity to work with our retired and now senior mechanic for a couple weeks and learn the ropes. Gabe grew up in Santa Cruz, graduated from SoCal, Ohio. He went on to complete an advanced engine performance program at Lever State University and became licensed with the state to inspect and repair available emissions. Gabe has worked for several respected local auto shops and also spent a number of years owning and running his own shop. When not working on cars, Gabe likes to spend time with his son, family members, and friends. So, Gabe, welcome.
Thank you. It's, uh, what's that? I'm sorry?
I said, "Welcome," but do you want to say your words?
It's great. I mean, everyone, you know, it's a great job, and then meeting everybody here, everyone's been so welcoming, so friendly, and it's kind of nice. Just, uh, I grew up right on 26th Avenue and always came down to Capitola constantly, so it's kind of cool to be on the larger community. I never realized that it would kind of give you a wholesome feeling to do that, you know? I was looking into the sort of job and then kind of lucked out on this one, because it's been everything I've wanted, and everyone's so great, and then just have that feeling of, you know, growing up here in the history and just kind of giving back in a sense. It's really cool. Creates a sense of wholeness, I guess.
Well said, Mr. Peterson. We really appreciate you, and welcome to the city.
Thank you very much. Look forward to many years.
As do I. Okay, so, thank you very much. We're gonna now move on to items two, the presentation of Capitol Police Department Officer of the Year.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. And most of you are aware, each year several members of the police department are nominated with prestigious Herb Ross Award, which honors and recognizes one individual for his or her work, performance, and contributions to the community throughout the year. And then a supervisory group is tasked with reviewing all of the nominations and selecting the honoring. Tonight, I am so proud to help behalf of the Capitol Police Department to introduce Detective Brantley Sandretti as the recipient of the 2020 Herb Ross Officer of the Year Award. Detective Sandretti is truly the definition of a home front employee here in the city of Capitola. Brantley began his law enforcement career by joining the ranks of our Capitol Police Explorer in 2009 and served in that position for two years. In 2011, he was selected as a department enforcement officer, served in that position for two years. And then in 2013, he was selected as a community service officer for two years, and then achieved his ultimate goal when he was hired as a Capitol Police Officer in 2015. In 2018, Detective Brantley Sandretti was selected as an investigator for our department, and he's in that position currently. Detective Sandretti has always maintained an approachable, calm demeanor and has a very strong work ethic. During the past year, Brantley has significantly complemented our department's criminal investigations unit by taking on a leadership role within the unit due to significant staffing shortages throughout the year. His responsibilities include case management and follow-up, crime trend analysis, response to incidents requiring specialized training, crime scene management, crime scene management and processing. And Brantley has investigated complex cases involving property crimes, financial crimes, sexual assault, violent crimes against individuals, and many other criminal matters in the city here. Brantley has used his experience and his expertise successfully to prosecute many cases through his collaborative and his methodical work with our local district attorney's office. And in addition to those very demanding assignments as a detective, Brantley has the following ancillary duties. He's our police explorer advisor, he's a firearm instructor, a less legal instructor, and a field training officer. Additionally, in 2016, Brantley was voted by his peers to represent them as the vice president of the Capitola Police Officers Association. Detective Sandretti is an asset to the community, the city of Capitola, and certainly to our police department. It is my great honor to present Detective Sandretti with this recognition as the 2020 recipient of the Herb Ross Award Officer of the Year for his outstanding service to the citizens of Capitola and to our community. And now if you could kindly direct your attention to Captain Dolly's camera, he's gonna present Brantley with the award.
Great. Uh, thank you, Chief, and good evening, Council and staff. I'm here this evening to present Brantley Sandretti, Detective Sandretti, with the Officer of the Year Award. Congratulations, Brantley.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, thank you, Chiefs, thank you, Captain. Also thank you, Mayor Brooks, Vice Mayor Peterson, and rest of the council for giving us a little segment here during your time this evening. For them to present me with this award is an honor, seeing those two have gotten that years prior to me. I guess it's been almost 10 years now that I've been here, looking forward to many more years in the city and my Capitol Police Department. Thank you.
Congratulations, Brantley, well done.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Detective. We are so, so proud of you. Yeah, don't go anywhere. I can see almost all of your face. I wish I were there to be part of this very special day. I just wanted to share a quick story. The first time that you and I actually shared words, which is probably a good thing, right?
Thank you.
We've worked for, for so long. Was actually one of the events on the youth prevention, uh, the youth violence prevention task force group that you participated in.
And, um, you really inspired me on your thoughtfulness and your take on the community and how important not only the constituents were to you or our residents, but how, um, how insightful you were in terms of, in, in terms of who was coming to visit us as a tourist community. And I was really inspired and happy to know that you were part of, uh, part of our team here. So congratulations. I am so honored to know you, and thank you for your hard work and your dedication to our city.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. So now we're gonna move on to item three, additional materials. Do we have any additional materials this evening?
None were received, Mayor.
I'm sorry, Chloe, was that you? I couldn't hear you.
Yes, can you hear me?
Oh, yes, now I can.
There were no additional materials received. Thank you.
Okay, and, um, for item four, additions and deletions, do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda this evening?
Staff has no changes to the agenda for this evening.
Thank you. Um, so now we're gonna be moving on to item five, our public comments. This is, um, a time for the public to comment on items not on the agenda this evening. Do we have anybody in the audience who'd like to make a comment?
Mayor Brooks, I do see someone with their hand up. Joanna Witcup.
Okay, this is, uh, Ms. Witcup, if you'd like to.
Uh, it's Dr. Witcup, but, um, anyway, marital status aside. Um, I just, I, I hope this is the right place to do this. I've been living on Park Avenue in Capitola for three years. I've written a letter, I've spoken to the police.
It's Dr. Witcup, but, um, anyway, marital status.
Um, we're getting some feedback, um, from Chloe.
Hold on, I'm, I'm sorry, doctor.
Yeah. Chloe, can you mute yourself? Or is that coming from Larry's feedback?
Yeah, I'm sorry, that, that, that was my fault. Sorry, we, we're having other technical difficulties. Sorry about that.
Okay. Do you want me to continue?
Yes, please, we'll restart your time for three minutes.
All I wanted to say is that I am living on a speedway. Um, I have written letters, I've spoken to police officers. Between, uh, Park Avenue and, um, Monterey, that turn onto Park Avenue, at least up to Cabrillo, is a place where, where cars and trucks continuously put their foot on the accelerator when they make the turn. If they go, they go by here like, my concern is somebody's gonna die. There are people here, there are kids here, this is a very well-populated street. I know that this is something you all are aware of, according to the feedback I've gotten from the people I've spoken with, that there seems to not be any apparent, um, help in getting this, this, uh, settled. My suggestion is that there be speed bumps, because I don't know how else to stop this, but I'm trying to say this to you before somebody dies. It is so severe. So that's why I, I am trying to participate in this meeting. That's it.
Thank you, Dr. Witcup, for your comments this evening. I have made a note of them. Um, do we have anybody else who would like to address Council this evening, Larry?
Mayor Brooks, I have someone from, it looks like the Human Care Alliance.
Okay, I, if you'd like to introduce yourself.
Hi, um, good evening, councilmembers. Leah Samuels here from Human Care Alliance. As you recall, I spoke to you at a city council meeting almost a year ago when the general fund, um, was cut for contributions to nonprofits. I know some of you, uh, expressed regret and promised to reevaluate the situation when you had a better sense of how your budget was doing. It's our belief that we do share many core values. I'm not calling to imply a lack of good work on your part this year. proud of that, it's the strength of leadership, community partners and residents. I have noticed some increased spending, so I believe a closer examination of nonprofit investing is due. Additionally, membership has become aware of some issues around their funding stream, and so I wanted to make you aware of those. Last year, CARE Act funds for rental assistance from Santa Cruz County excluded Capitola residents, that's my understanding, and we'd like to partner with you. And other cities left out, in hopes that that will not happen again. We thought you should be made aware, if you aren't already, that PPP-two loans are less accessed by nonprofits than businesses due to the need to show a 25% loss. This was offset for many nonprofits last year through generous one-time donations, but those donations will not be sustained at the levels seen earlier, whereas the economic fallout to your constituents, particularly those accessing these services, is expected to last for some time. Finally, CDBG dollars and CAREZAC dollars are coming in, and we need to look at the needs of the community and those most impacted. We urge you to use these funds to target marginalized and low-income communities and find ways that will directly benefit those most in need of food, shelter, and services. We all want small businesses to survive. We know individual families have struggled due to closures. Nonprofits have been there for some of these families. Unfortunately, subscribing in a concept of trickle-down economics that favors investing in businesses instead of individuals is not having the desired effect. The survey by California, by Capitolas that 56% of businesses weren't planning to close, many were planning to use the money for advertising or to pay down loans. Unfortunately, many of them ended up closing nonetheless. And we believe that, um, that these funds, since they are limited funds and they are short-term funds, should be used to benefit those who are most affected by the pandemic and could most benefit from short-term funding influxes. If possible, a group of 65-plus seniors, most at risk, followed by families who suddenly and dramatically had their basic well-being threatened. This is temporary one-time funding, and the nonprofits are here for small business owners and families to help prop them up while they figure out what to do next. I propose to steal a term from the blueprint on shared safety, wellness is safety. Thank you.
Ms. Samuels? All right, so now we're gonna be moving on to item six. This is our city council and staff comments, um, time. Do we have any staff comments?
Staff doesn't have any comments for this evening.
Okay. And now we'll go ahead and move to council comments, and I see, uh, Vice Mayor Story hand raised.
Thank you, Mayor Brooks. I wanted to report out, uh, to the council and the staff and, and the public, um, the, um, outcome from our last Arts Commission meeting. Uh, I'm the council representative, uh, to the Arts Commission. Um, and the significant items, um, are that, um, Arts Commission is still, um, discussing, um, the, uh, painting, you know, the Depot Hill stairs, um, and are, you know, reaching out to an artist for a design. Um, and, uh, that one, if, once a design is approved, it'll be coming to council, um, for consideration and, and vote. Um, we also, uh, are continuing to plan for the summer concerts, um, even though things are still kind of up in the air, um, uh, but we're hopeful, um, so, um, we're not taking any steps to cancel those yet. And that's also true for the, uh, Plinair event that usually takes place, um, uh, in October. Um, you know, we're, uh, uh, hopeful about, uh, being able to put on, uh, some sort of, uh, of art event at that time. Um, and the final thing, um, the Arts Commission did discuss, um, you know, there's a, a large, um, Cypress stump that's in the lower parking lot. Uh, I know some of you may have seen it, uh, it's quite an impressive stump, and so the Arts Commission, um, uh, took that on as a potential a, art project, um, and discussions of maybe collaborating with our museum, uh, to do something, um, with that, um, very imposing, very large, uh, um, uh, tree stump that's in our parking lot. Um, so, um, that's my report on the, uh, Arts Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Bertrand?
Uh, sure, Mayor, um, you know, I heard the comments from a resident on Long Park, I believe, and, uh, Steve Jesford may comment on an effort that, uh, City Capitola had at one time where, um, various committees were, uh, tasked to talk about traffic issues in their particular neighborhoods. And the one that, um, was done in Cliffwood Heights identified Park Avenue as particular concern, so that's reflective of this lady's, uh, comments. Um, one sort of interesting feature of that street and why there have been accidents is that a lot of people, when they go along that street, especially the tourists, are busy looking at the bay view, and they forget there's a stop sign or maybe someone's actually trying to cross the street. So I think that's contributed to some accidents along there, and, um, our police chief could probably tell us a little bit more about what has actually happened on that street. But I totally agree that Park Avenue is, I think, um, not adequately, um, reflective of the speeds that go, actually are on that street and what is necessary for safety. When you get to, um, Monterey first, uh, down at the end of Monterey, it's a little bit slower because of the school, but I think it should be as that's posted all the way out to, um, what is it, uh, the freeway approach. Um, totally in support of the, uh, cultural council doing the streets, tree stump. I've, I've thought that could be a great addition to Capitola, especially the way it's done in terms of making it an attraction to, uh, tourists. As they come to, uh, Capitola, that could be something that, uh, sort of like the one at the park in Fulton, you know, gives all the dates, could have the date 1949, when the city was founded, and other dates, like when, uh, the city, excuse me, when this area became major tourist attraction. It's been around that long. So, um, welcome to Capitola sign on the top, something of that sort. I look forward to the proposals that come out of the, uh, the Cultural Committee. Um, also, someone else talked about, um, our contributions that are now in abeyance to, uh, the nonprofits in this county. And, uh, I, I do recognize that I think we've been remiss in our addressing that particular issue that we put on hold. Uh, we did have a process where we were trying to figure out a, um, I guess, a logical way to address our needs in terms of the city of Capitola and how much money that we felt was appropriate to give to that effort to address the needs that the whole community has. So I've been a proponent of this. I think Capitola's a long history, it's supporting nonprofits, and that stood the benefit of all of us. And so I'd like to bring that forward, and, um, I hope the mayor brings to us some item next time, next meeting, I'm making a request, to tell us where we're at in that effort. Um, as been pointed out, our budget is much better than we thought before, and initially when we pulled back from those contributions, it was because we thought we wouldn't have the money. But it's apparent that now we do have much more money. We may not be able to fund to the full extent as before, but I think there is need still. I don't think anyone here on this commission, excuse me, city council denies that need, but how and when are we going to address it as we have before? Um, and I've been listening to the, uh, um, the proceedings at Congress, and it makes me reflect more than ever before, I believe everyone here on the council shares my belief that participating in our civic duties and participating on the level that we do, and also knowing that everyone in this community can participate on multiple levels so that our community is strong. So I just put out there, try to think of ways that you could participate so our community is stronger than ever. We have so many communities, uh, around here that may not have that participation. I think Capitola is unique. We do have so many people that participate, but keep thinking about that, because that's what ensures your safety here, that's what ensures your enjoyment here, and that's what ensures so many benefits that we enjoy because we live in Capitola. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bertrand. Councilmember Peterson?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, sort of to, uh, Councilmember Bertrand's point, um, pre-pandemic, I believe it was 2019, uh, there was a, a subcommittee made up of myself and Councilmember Bertrand that was assigned to, uh, determining kind of the priorities and considerations of how we should redist, uh, uh, reallocate our community grant funding in a way that is equitable. Um, there were some concerns that previously large percentages of our money were going to just, you know, one or, or two, uh, organizations, and some of the other organizations weren't giving, getting quite as much, and we had just been doing the same thing every year for year on, years on end without considering, um, a, a new, more equitable approach. Um, and so I think it's incredibly important that as we move into our mid-year budget review, which is coming up, uh, very soon here, um, that we do look at reallocating our community grant dollars, uh, and I would request that, um, we reconvene a subcommittee. I would like to request that I remain on it, um, and that we find someone to replace Councilmember Bautorff, um, perhaps Mayor Brooks, she would be interested, so that we can begin a conversation of how to more equitably, um, dis- distribute these funds to our community, uh, partners. And, um, perhaps it may be appropriate for a future agenda item for the council to collectively consider our priorities, so that the subcommittee can then, uh, convene to use those priorities as a guideline for how we're gonna be funding, uh, our, our community programs moving forward. I think it's very important that we look, um, at ensuring that, that those dollars are spread throughout our community, uh, in, in an equitable fashion.
Thank you, Councilmember Bertrand, I mean, Councilmember Peterson, pardon me. Man, um, I think staff has made that note, and we can revisit that and, um, discuss offline. Jamie? Thank you. Um, okay, then I just had a comment here that as we, the groundhog says, there's only six more weeks of winter, folks, so as we hope for a early spring here, um, and we anticipate more, uh, visitors, I, I was looking at the Lower Park Cove and the signage, and I'd like to ask staff to look at, um, better signage for folks to recognize that there's parking opportunities at Lower Park, um, Cove, in addition to direction or signage, um, on how to get to the beach. I've noted folks, um, who are, uh, disabled or handicapped going the wrong direction to the beach, they're going up the hill, not recognizing that they could go the easier route, and perhaps we can look at some, um, signage opportunities if, uh, physically possible. So if staff can come back with some more information for council to review, that would be great. And then our last comment, uh, for council comments, I see, uh, Councilmember Kaiser Tanrey.
Senator, I'd like to make another comment, too.
Um, yeah, I wanna second, um, pretty much exactly what you said, Mayor Brooks. Um, I've actually been talking to a couple of the business owners, um, within the village as well, and, um, and just being down there myself, a lot of conversations with out-of-towners where they're standing like, where you think it would be obvious that the beach is right in front of you, but they still aren't sure of where to go or how to get there. Um, so even as far as down towards like Cork and Fork and the Beach House rentals, some signage there, um, as how to get to the beach. And, um, even pushing that a little bit further, possibly more of a directory-type thing that would involve some of the small businesses, um, m- maybe get the BIA involved with that, um, if we could get something that's a little bit more clear-cut and get people, um, some exposure to people who are first timers and don't know where their favorite shops are yet and all that, um, I think, obviously, we've discussed, uh, doing a sort of goals meeting, so maybe we could visit that when we do that.
Thank you for the consensus, and just to remind, this is not an item for voting or further discussion, because it's not on the agenda, um, and we have, uh, Councilmember Bertrand.
Yeah, I, um, I've shared your wonderment, Mayor, and, um, so I've actually, during some time, I've spent hours out there in the parking lot talking to people, wondering why are you going this way as opposed to that way, why are you going up the hill and stuff like that, and, um, I think we do need better signage, I have no doubt about that. But, uh, some people said they actually like walking down Monterey to see the bay as they walk down the street. And, you know, it wasn't just one or two comments, it was, it was multiple comments, uh, many more than two, let's put it that way. And, um, they said, yeah, I know I could get to the beach going down the hill and, you know, down Capitola Avenue, but I really like seeing the bay as I walk down the hill.
I appreciate the support, Councilmember Bertrand, thank you. I, I want us to move along, though, did you want to add anything else, um, for staff? Councilmember Bertrand?
No, I, I have no problem with extras, but I think some people like...
Oh, you muted yourself, okay. Well, I appreciate the support, um, I think staff has made that notation there. Um, okay, so we're gonna move on to item seven, uh, consent calendar, and as all, all of you know already, this is an item that we will vote on as, as, um, including all items, they'll be enacted into one motion in the form listed below. Do we have any council members who have any, um, who have any questions about this or would like to pull an item?
I'll move, uh, I'll move approval of the consent calendar.
I'll second it.
Here we have a first and a, first and a second, any discussion for, as, well, we can't discuss it because it's consent, so, um, can I have a roll call, please?
Public comments?
Um, not for consent, we don't need to take it to the, to the public. Is that correct, Samantha? Or Jamie, I think you're on...
That is correct, I was giving Samantha a chance.
Okay, great. So, yeah, we do not need to take it to the public, Councilmember Bertrand. So we have a first and a second, Chloe, may I have a roll call, please?
Yes, Councilmember Bertrand.
Um, I approve.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Hi.
Councilmember Peterson.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Story.
Hi.
Mayor Brooks.
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay, so that item passes unanimously at this point. Um, we are moving on to item eight, General Government Public Hearing. We're gonna, uh, move on to item A, Capitola Historical Museum 2020 Annual Report, and Mr. Perry, I believe this is your item.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Um, I'm gonna give a short slideshow here. I'm hitting share screen and it's not happening.
Okay, I'm not seeing it being shared. Oh, there we go.
Is that working now?
It is. I believe you can, um, expand your screen, Mr. Perry, perfect. Looks great.
Okay, thank you, I'll get started then. Uh, so the, uh, the museum, of course, was, uh, closed to, uh, the public for a good part of 2020, but, uh, nevertheless, we had quite a productive year. Uh, the year, as some of you might remember, started off with a showing of, uh, a silent film called The Testing Block, which was shot in Capitola in 1920, and over a hundred and thirty people attended the showing. Later on, I put the film on our museum YouTube channel, and it has had almost, uh, 600 views. In March, we completed a, uh, a new exhibition. It opened, and it's titled Capitola Then and Now. It features historical photographs side by side with the same scenes today. Because not very many people got to see the displays, the exhibition will be up through 2021, and hopefully the museum will reopen sometime before too long, and people can enjoy it. The museum is responsible for the Focal Point feature in the Sentinel each Sunday showcasing a historical photograph of Capitola or some other area of the county. This feature reaches, uh, over 6,000, or 16,000 readers each week, according to the Sentinel. Focal Point not only helps publicize Capitola in the museum, but also attracts donations to the museum. This is part of a collection of aerial photographs of the 41st Avenue This is part of a collection of aerial photographs of the 41st Avenue area, taken in the 1960s and 70s. The large building is what is now outdoor supply hardware. The museum put out three newsletters this past year, each mailed to over 250 people. The last was a theme issue on women in Capitola history. We have been working a lot on better organizing the museum's collections. We have much more than can be displayed at any one time, which is why we usually change exhibitions every year. We have been making sure that things are stored properly and that an inventory of everything in the collection has been made. Another project has been transcribing the Helen Benbow letters. Helen Benbow is a young woman in her early twenties who lived and worked in Capitola from 1919 until 1921. She assisted architect George McCray, who was working for Henry Allen Rispin. And her personal letters to family members provide an intimate glimpse of the county at that time. She helped draw the plans for the Rispin Mansion, which was completed in 1921. The museum last year created a special website about the mansion's history in Capitola in the 1920s, which I hope will be a valuable resource for the Capitola community for many years into the future. It has a timeline, slideshow, videos, quiz, trivia page, and a self-guided walking tour. Some of the photographs on the website have not been shown before, such as this picnic at the mansion in the 1930s, when it was owned by the Smith family. Since the museum has not been open, we have added some outdoor displays of photographs with the help of Joshua, youth representative to the board. We have also been posting photos on our Facebook page. At the very end of the year, we started a work, a project to better organize the museum's collection of framed art. We have been taking detailed, a detailed inventory, photographing each, and installing a better storage system. I am especially excited about the permanent display space that the museum is going to have in the new Capitola Library. I'm looking forward to setting up the first exhibit there sometime later this year. And that concludes my report.
Oh, I can see it, Mr. Perry, in your screen. That's, if you want to stop sharing your screen, that'd be great. Thank you so much, Mr. Perry. That was so weird, seeing myself two times. Okay, so this is just a, an item to receive a report, but do council members have any questions at this time? Councilmember Peterson?
I apologize. Is this item going to public comment? I have comments, but not questions.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, you broke up.
Oh, I'm sorry. I have a comment, but not a question. Is now the time or is this item going to public comment first?
Am I getting myself backwards today? Does it go to, it goes out to public comment first or did, Samantha?
The item does require a public comment. You can call for public comment at any time that you would like. I think generally you take questions, then you go to public comment, and then you receive deliberations.
Thank you. I think, I think I got mixed up earlier with Councilmember Bertrand. I was thrown for a loop. I lost my train of thought. So Councilmember Peterson, did you have questions at this time?
No, my apologies. I had a, I had a comment. I was confusing the presentation with an agenda item. So it was me that got backwards. So I will hold my comments until after public comment. Thank you.
We'll blame it on the weather today. How about that? Okay, so we'll move to public comments or questions. Do we have any comments or questions at this time from our public?
Mayor Brooks, I do not see anybody asking to comment either via the Zoom or via email.
All right, so we'll bring it back to council for any comments. Councilmember Peterson?
Thank you. I would just like to thank you, Frank, and the entire museum board of trustees and all the volunteers for all of the hard work that you all do to, to maintain Capitola's history. And I know that throughout this past year and the pandemic, the museum has been working on collecting people's stories because it has been a historic year. And so again, I just want to thank you and the whole board and all the volunteers for everything you do. It's incredibly important work and we're very grateful.
Thank you.
And Vice Mayor Story.
Well, thank you, Mayor Brooks. Frank, I as well just want to thank you for all the hard work you do to keep Capitola history alive. I always love seeing it, seeing those old photographs, seeing our little red cottage museum. It brings a smile to my face. I think it's really important that we know what our history is and that we preserve it. And you, with your board of trustees, I want to thank them as well for the work that they do to keep Capitola history alive. And I really look forward to seeing your permanent exhibits in the new Capitola library. So thank you, Frank.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Bertrand?
Yeah, I'd just like to tell a little story about Frank Perry. I thought it's illustrative of his concern and interest in our local history. So I don't know if any of you know what that little side building is next to the main museum, but I do. And he knows what it is. And I told him a little bit about where it was, where it came from, and he didn't know that. So, you know, went through a big story about where the actual location was and described the buildings that it was behind and stuff like that. And I see you shaking your head to remember when it happened. And it was kind of neat. He knew exactly what I was talking about. I said, I can walk you there if you want. They built a new building, but the alleyway is still there and I could show you exactly where it was. He said, oh, I know exactly where it was. So here's someone who knows the history of this area, posted intimately, doesn't even need to be walked there. But as soon as you make a comment, be ready to explain to him what it's all about in terms of the historic context. He had me there riveted for a while until I explained the whole thing to him. Well, thanks, Frank, for everything you do. And many cities, when I lived in Boulder Creek, you know, they have a museum out there, which you're aware of, and it used to be in an attic somewhere and then they bought the church across the road. But the longer I was there, I lived there for about 10 years, and I know how important that museum was to the, to the area. It sort of keeps things together, you know. It bridges community, excuse me, different generations. And glad to see you have a youth there. You know, it's a very, very important part of the community. And I think, if I'm not mistaken, there's more people volunteering with you at the museum than almost any other committee in this city.
Thank you.
You're more than welcome.
Great. Well, Mr. Perry, I can only echo what my counterpart kept said already. Thank you so much for your work and bringing history to life here in Capitola. I appreciate it. And I just want to confirm, Samantha, do we need a vote for this item since it is, there is a recommended action? No? Okay, great. Thank you. Okay. Wonderful. So now we'll go ahead and move on to item B. And this is the Local Early Action Planning Grant Update and Affordable Housing Nexus Study Contract. And I'll turn this over to staff.
Thank you, Mayor Brooks. And council, can you hear me okay?
We can, Katie. Thank you.
Hi. And I'm pulling up my duplicate screen. Here we go. Okay, so you'll recall, back in November, I introduced that the state had come out with a local early action planning, the LEAP grants. This came out from the state of California. They had $119 million for cities and counties to work towards creating planning documents and process implements that would accelerate housing production or facilitate compliance, which implements the sixth cycle of RENA, your Regional Housing Needs Assessment. Capitola, they divvied up the funding based on population and need and Capitola was assigned $65,000. We were awarded this money on December 2nd, 2020. Within our project description, we asked for the money to cover our Affordable Housing Nexus Study and also Inclusionary Housing Ordinance Update. So, and that housing study is tied to the IHO update. So what is a nexus study? A nexus study is required by law. It's tied to the Mitigation Fee Act for whenever there's impact fees that offset the impacts to new development and its impacts to public services. Whenever you're going to charge an impact fee, the city has to do an essential, find the essential nexus between the development and the impact fees that seek to mitigate those impacts. And the development fee that you assign must be roughly proportional to the development's impact. So when we're talking about affordable housing and looking at developments, it is what is that impact to our community and what is a fee that can help assist to mitigate those impacts? On, I'm sorry, I should say December 17th, I published a RFP, Request for Proposals. We received three different proposals. I had a selection committee made up of local, local employees that work in the housing industry. And the proposal that came to the top was the Economic and Planning Systems Proposal, EPS. They have a lot of experience in this and a really strong proposal with a great team. What was included in their proposal was a nexus study as well as a feasibility analysis. And that's an essential part of a nexus study. A nexus study will show you exactly what the amount it costs to offset or mitigate the impacts of the affordable housing. But the feasibility analysis really looks at what can your local economy handle? And you wouldn't want your fees to be too high that it prevents development from occurring and therefore, you know, your goal of increasing housing because your impact fee is too high, people aren't producing housing. So that feasibility analysis really analyzes the data of the nexus study and says what is feasible to make sure that development can continue in your community. And also included in there, because we're doing our IHO update as well as the nexus study and asked them to also give us an alternative for an additional hearing should we need it in this process. So the total fee is $40,890. In total, we received $65,000. And you will recall that we started our IHO update last fall. We placed it on hold in order to work on this nexus study. So within the LEAP budget, we've been given some money for covering the cost of drafting the IHO, which the work is being shared between our city attorney's office and our staff. And then our previous housing staff, Carolyn Flynn, has been instrumental in reviewing the documents and just has a wealth of knowledge in helping us with the review there. And then, again, the $40,000 to go towards EPS for their nexus study and feasibility study. The total of $65,000. Tonight, we're recommending that you authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with the EPS, Inc., in the amount of $40,890 for a LEAP grant project to prepare the nexus study and housing feasibility analysis and also a resolution to amend the city's budget to include the $65,000 grant award in our budget. So with that, that concludes my presentation and I'm available for questions.
Thank you so much, Katie. So I see Vice Mayor Stories, Henry.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Katie, for that report. My question goes to the EPS proposal and on the Agenda Package 79. They lay out two options for preparing the approach to calculating affordable housing. You know, there's option 2A, Affordable Housing Demand from Full-Time Residents, and option 2B, Affordable Housing Demand for Part-Time Residents. And there's, you know, and I was, I was kind of unclear, I wasn't, which one of those options had been selected or if they had both been selected and they're built into the price? And if they haven't been selected, what's the process for making that decision?
Yes, so within their task, in Task 1, to prepare the nexus study, they did include two options, one for the Affordable Housing Demand for Full-Time Residents and the second for Affordable Housing Demand for Part-Time Residents. We haven't identified which of those they should do, but I can tell you that because our, the majority of our housing is full-time residents, we'll definitely have to be looking at that. And we'll also need to work with them to see, is it legal? This is actually something that came out of our IHO discussion. I remember there was a question from council regarding, can we look at the impact of second homeowners here? So we haven't defined which path we're going to go down, but we will work closely with them and I'll work with our city attorney as well to see what can we tie to our impact analysis. I have a feeling it'll, it'll almost be a combination of the two, knowing that a certain percentages of our, of our homes go, are, end up being vacation rentals. So maybe we can build that into our equation for the impacts. And our census, you know, when our census data comes out in the next year, it'll be interesting to see where our vacation rentals are in the, in the next, in the 2020 census and how much they've increased over the last decade.
Right. Are you, are you looking for direction from council on those two options tonight? Because I didn't get a sense that this is coming back or that decision is being made.
If, if we need direction from council on that item, I will bring it back. But I think it's more working with EPS and probably our city attorney to see what we can legally put in the nexus study.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I see Councilmember Bertrand, Henry.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Katie, yeah, I read their proposal. They identify a couple of areas of interest to me. And I may have been the one that talked about housing that's not permanent in this community and how it affects our housing availability to residents and how it skews the affordability. So I'd like a little bit more explanation about that. You mentioned rentals that are short-term rentals. My concern, and I think they mention this in the report or their proposal, residents that come here and they may only visit once a year. And, you know, they're taking away housing stock. So if you could address that a little bit, how their proposal might touch on that. And I think some of their experience that they detailed does talk about that. And then I have one more question after that.
Okay, so they did propose to look at that for full-time residents versus second home ownership. They did not say if they would base it on a percentage of, you know, how many homes in Capitola are second homes? But we'll work with them to see how they want to incorporate that into the analysis. I don't have the answer to exactly how they will do that yet. But there are different impacts from primary homeowners to second homeowners. And like you stated, some are just here for two weeks out of the year. So we'll, we'll take a look at that and see what those, they, you know, full-time resident has very different impacts than a second homeowner. So it's something we'll be studying, how they do work it into. So, it's something we'll be studying, how they do work it into the equation and calculating the fee. We will bring that information to you when we're, when we're doing the study.
Okay. Thank you very much. And maybe this is not the right time, but when you're talking about inclusionary housing options, we've been aligning ourselves with the state of California in terms of granny units, et cetera. Are those considered available when the developer is thinking about expanding housing options? Being that granny units by and large cost a lot less to build and maybe that could be equivalent to their fee? So, that's a question. And I don't know if this report or this study EPS will identify or even deal with that. I'm just wondering if there's an issue here that could be covered by their proposal, their report, excuse me.
So, the ADUs, the Exceptory Dwelling Units, they, we do not charge a fee for those, an inclusionary housing fee. They're, they're not subject to that. We do not currently have a waiver for our inclusionary ordinance if they were to develop an ADU. It's something we can look at because it, whether or not that creation of an additional unit can make up for their requirement for the affordable housing.
Okay. I think you're getting to what I'm thinking of because, you know, we're doing ADUs, we're trying to make it accessible to developers and maybe if this is a way to increase that number of ADUs in this area. So, that was my question.
Yeah. If we were to do that, I would suggest that we would deed restrict the unit so that, you know, it could have to be deed restricted because I think there are circumstances where ADUs are developed and a person gets a much larger home and a second vacation home on their property as well. But if you deed restrict it for affordable, then it could provide some well-needed housing.
Okay. You know, I've talked to the city manager about the issues with following up on restrictions. Is that something city planning could handle if we started getting deed restrictions on ADUs because it's providing low-income housing?
We already have that built into our code to allow that you can deed restrict your ADU.
Okay. So, following up.
That's already built.
Okay. Thank you. I just, thanks for that clarification. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Bertrand. Any other questions at this time? Okay. Seeing none, I'll go ahead and check in with our public to see if there are any public comments or questions.
Mayor Brooks, I do not see anyone asking to comment in Zoom or in email.
Okay. Thank you, Larry. So, I'll bring this back to council for comment and deliberation. Councilmember Bertrand, your hands raised.
Yeah. Just a comment. I'm very interested in what kind of options this study could present to the city council for part-time residents and how we could deal with that, even if it is not an issue or if it is an issue, something to be brought forward to us so that we could think about that. I think in general, my neighborhood, Cliffwood Heights, has been campaigning over the last 15 years, you know, going from house to house. Residents often tell me, don't even bother knocking on the next five houses or something like that because they don't even live here. And, you know, thinking about a community with such vacancies just sort of makes me shake my head and also knowing families can't move into there, just causes me great grief. So, if they have options, I would like to know, you know, for us to consider as a city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bertrand. And so, when we bring this back for council deliberation and for a motion, I do want to remind the motion maker that we do need to make two motions because there's two different items. On Item B, there's, well, I should say there's three. There's ones that we received, the report or the update. And then, there's Item 2 to authorize the city manager and then Option 3 to approve the resolution. So, if we have a council member who'd like to make a motion for Item B2, we'll start with that.
I'll move the update.
One second.
And this is Item B2, Councilmember Bertrand. So, that's just to authorize the city manager. That's the item that we're gonna go ahead and, would you like to pull your, your first motion?
Sorry about the order. Yeah. I'll go with authorize the city manager. I'll please sorry about that.
Okay. So, I have a first, a motion by Councilmember Bertrand for Item B2. Do we have a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay. I have a second from Councilmember Kaiser. And I'll go ahead and do a roll call for this Item B2. Can I have a roll call, Chloe?
Councilmember Bertrand.
Aye.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Story. Mayor Brooks.
Aye. And I'm gonna turn this over to Samantha. Are we moving in the right direction?
You're doing great. Excellent. We just need one more motion on B3 to approve the resolution to amend the budget.
Okay. So, do I have a motion for Item C3 for the approval, approval of resolution to amend the city budget?
May I ask just a point of order? I thought we were still needed to do Number 1 and Number 3 and that that last vote was just for Item Number 2.
You don't need a motion to receive an update. You don't need to take any action. You just received the motion, you just received the update. So, all you need to take action on are Items B2 and B3. You just need to authorize the city manager to enter into the agreement with EPS and you need to adopt the resolution.
Thank you for that clarification, Senator. I'll move the resolution.
Okay. We have a motion for Item B3. We have a first. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a second from Councilmember Peterson. Can I have a roll call for Item B3?
Councilmember Bertrand.
I approve.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Story. Mayor Brooks.
Aye. All right, folks. Moving right along with all kinds of formalities and intricacies of tonight's agenda, we are moving on to Item B and this is a, to receive a presentation on the Rispin Park Project. And Mr. Jeffberg, is this your item?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Good to talk about the Rispin Mansion again. This is gonna be a joint presentation of myself and the project designer, Mike Arnone. He was sitting there. I'm gonna ask Mike to share his screen. He has the PowerPoint. And then, we'll go from there. So, Mike?
Okay.
Very good.
How's that looking?
Perfect.
Okay.
So, go ahead and advance the slide. So, some quick background on the Rispin Project. Seems like it's been around for years and it actually has. Oh, and years of trying to complete the commercial development on the property and then having a fire in 2011. The council voted in 2014 to pursue the development of a park project on the grounds. The goal of that project was to open the grounds up to the public but to keep the building itself closed in its current kind of mothballed shape. Two, start with, I think there's two public workshops were held in 2015 down in the community room under which we developed some conceptual plans. These plans were ultimately approved by the city council in May of 2015. The first phase of the development of it involved rebuilding the ADA pathway from the creek up to Wharf Road and providing access throughout the Rispin site. And that was completed in 2016. Since that completion of that, the project's been on hold due to a lack of funding. And that's why we're here tonight. We're currently seeking a State Parks Grant to help us complete the funding and move this project forward. Next slide, there we go. So, currently, the city recently received, or hosted two webinars in, to receive public comment on the conceptual design that was previously approved. These were held on November 16th and December 2nd. During these workshops, the conceptual plans were, received overwhelming support and there was suggestions to increase the lighting on the pathway to the creek, Angela Creek, and to include rose lines and violet plants. Some, I think the rose lines were actually offshoots of what was on the property and the violet plants were something that were quite common in this area during, in the early 1900s. So, we took those and as Mike will show you, we included those in the plan. Looking at the State Parks Grant, the, in January, the city did receive a per capita grant from the California State Parks. They signed the contracts for that and it's an amount of $178,000. There's a second State Parks Competitive Grant, which is now available to be applied for. Staff has recommended the city apply for a grant in the amount of $482,000. If this grant is approved, we would be complete to necessary funding and proceed with the So, here's just the chart of funding as we stand and where we could be. You see, under current budget, we have the per capita grant, which we have now secured. We actually have general fund money, which has been allocated different times over the years, about $450,000. Here, it's a total available funding right now, $634,000. The project estimate is $825,000. Maybe it's just short of $200,000 short as we sit today. As we move forward, the grant, the, I actually saw on that chart if you can, Mike, go back one. Thank you. The per capita grant requires the city to provide matching funds for 20% of the project total. So, under that, we would have to provide 20% of the $825,000, which is $165,000. And then, we can backfill the rest of the funding with the $482,000 grant application. That would return to the general fund if everything comes through and the prices there are, or provide a contingency of $291,000. We were, spent a lot of time picking out that grant number. We did contact the State Parks Grant person who said that the award of the grant is not based on funding or the amount of local funding in it for the competitive grant. I think the maximum is $8 million and the minimum is $200,000. So, we feel quite comfortable asking for the maximum that we can for this project, which would be the $482,000. Okay, Mike? So, at this point, I would like to formally introduce Mike Arnone, who's the project designer and landscape architect. You can see the subconsultants and staff that he's used here. I won't list them all. It's been something we've been working on, like I said, since 2015. And I think as, as we go through this, you'll see quite a bit of work has been put in and it's quite an exciting project. So, with that, I will stop talking and let Mike Arnone show us his project.
Well, hi, everybody. I'm happy to be here and to talk to you and go through the project. I'll do this as efficiently as I can. There is a lot of information and we want to get through most of it. But just to familiarize everybody with where we are and what we're talking about, these are some great aerial shots of the mansion. This is, of course, the remaining part of the Rispin. This is the new library over here and of course, Plares and Wharf Road. This section of the, the buildings here are no longer there. They were part of the convent that was there in the, I guess, in the 50s and 60s. This is from, taken from the other side, obviously, but again, this is the remaining section of the mansion. And then, this is the, you know, massive garden area that we're trying to rebuild. So, a couple of things to take note of, there are the eucalyptus trees that are way over here are not existing at this point. Also, the large oak trees that are in the park now are no, are not part of this photograph. So, things have changed, obviously, but just to give you an idea of what it, what it did look like at one point. And again, this was a really cool shot taken from across the river. This is that little patio where the girls were having that barbecue in Frank's slideshow earlier. That was taken right around in here somewhere. These are just different states of the mansion over the years and how it's kind of deteriorated. I really applaud the city council, whatever it was, six, seven years ago, for deciding to board it up and to, you know, paint it and re-roof it and preserve the building because it is a really neat part of our, our history in Capitola. Again, some shots of what it looked like during different periods of time. Kind of a neat shot of the interior. This window is still there. It's on the very face of, the west face of the mansion. This is that interior courtyard, the back of the building where that shot was taken with the barbecue. And this is what was left of the windows, the big tower of windows before it was boarded up. Some shots of the garden. I'll talk about specifically a lot of these things, but this is the sun dial. This was the grand lawn area. There was a four-foot wide oval pathway that went around the garden. That's the water fountain and the reflecting pool. This is the historic Rose Arbor. This is taken from where we have now the ADA ramps that look back to the, to the water feature there. Okay. So, the park design currently includes all of these elements and I'm gonna go through these separately, but the ADA pathway that Steve mentioned earlier, the restoration of the fountain, the reflecting pool. And in terms of the reflecting pool, we're talking about the structural and surface repairs, not actually creating a water element with, well, a pool with water in it. The mansion entrance stairs, the entry arch that comes off of Wharf Road, the repair of the garden wall along Wharf Road, the sun dial that I mentioned, the overlook, which I'll show you in a second, the pathway, the arbor, and then, of course, we've added planting and irrigation. So, kind of an overview, the Rispin is here in gold. There are some original paving that exists that's still here and that color reflects, you know, where we're adding new pavers to match what was there originally. So, all the peach-colored areas are the new brick pavers. These also are existing right around the fountain here. The peach color again are the pavers, the beige color are the path finds that we're gonna have as most of the walking system is a kind of a decomposed granite system. The blue is the reflecting pool and the fountain. One of the areas that we've added is a bocce ball court. That was a result of one of our public, very first public meeting that we had, that people expressed an interest in having a bocce ball area. The green are the existing trees. Most of these from here over are oak trees. These are the big eucalyptus that are along Wharf Road. And of course, there's, there's more here that aren't shown on the survey. The green areas are the landscape areas. We'll talk specifically about those in a bit. And the white areas are everything that's there that's remaining as is pretty much. So, some of the new elements that we're adding are fencing for security reasons, overhead lighting, again, for security, the modification of the garden wall, which is along Wharf Road. We're adding handrails to the existing steps because they need to meet code or current building code. One of the elements that we've, that we're excited about is this amphitheater, which I'll show you, which faces the lower part of the mansion. A nature play area, which is a kid's, you know, play, play area. That was also one of the suggestions by, I can't remember her name unfortunately, but she came to the first meeting and suggested this type of play area be developed for the park. And we worked at it and it's really a nice fit for what we're trying to do there. The bocce ball court I mentioned, we're also adding bike racks, picnic and game tables, benches, trash, and recycling receptacles. We're having an automatic drip system for all the new planting and we're gonna talk about murals that will go in some of the windows of the mansion. The accessible path of travel, the red arrows, again, Wharf Road is here, the mansion's The accessible path of travel, the red arrows, again, Wharf Road is here, the mansion's down in here. The red arrows are what has been built, coming from Wharf Road, there's a system to get all the way down the ramps here and then to the existing asphalt, and finally to the turn that goes to the bridge that goes over the creek. In blue is the proposed ramp walkway system that gets you to the front of the mansion and also to the amphitheater area. So when the project is completed, it'll be completely accessible. Restoration of the historic elements. So, again, I, I won't spend a whole lot of time on these, I, I don't want to take up too much of your time, but this was originally, you know, what the fountain looked like during the early period, spilling into the big reflecting pool. This is what the fountain looks like, you know, two years ago, I guess, when I took this picture. So we are going to use these drawings that I've done to restore this element to look and work as a, you know, as a working fountain again, and to get that to look like this picture here. The basin itself, again, because of water restrictions and safety restrictions with a water element like this, we're, we're not proposing to put water in this. We are going to clean it all out and refinish the surface with some type of, you know, possibly an art deco kind of tile or something that is done by the, the Arts Commission. My concept is to have some kind of a sculpture in the center that is kind of a kinetic thing that reflects water. So we get the feel of water, but without, without using water. Some of the staircases, this is the upper staircase, again, this is what it looks like today with the new railing. We won't be attaching to the staircase because of structural reasons and trying to preserve this historically. So there'll be, the railing will anchor off to the side and then kind of loop over. But that's kind of what the new staircase would look like, as well as the fencing, which I'll talk about. The lower staircase, again, this is what it looked like during the fifties and sixties. This is sort of what it looks like today, I think it's actually a little worse. The plan is to, you know, again, restore what needs to be restored. These will probably remain, the little cheek walls will remain, the columns will remain, although they'll be resurfaced. And this will all be redone, because these are pretty beat up and, of course, is where people are walking, so this has to be pretty safe. So this will all be, the staircase will be redone. Here's another shot, again, that balustrade in the last picture is no longer there, of course, that's along here. So all the balustrades that look like this in the back of the mansion will be restored to look, you know, again, to have that look of the nineteen twenties, hopefully. The sun dial, this is all that's remaining of the base of the pedestal. This is what it looked like at the time, this is that base right here. So, from, just from this picture, really, I had to kind of draw this thing and try to get the proportions correct, but this will be redone. And then the sun dial of some type will be selected and that'll be on top of this, this element. This is the observation area, and, of course, it'll look a heck of a lot better without the chain link fence, but this is the existing observation area, this is kind of what it's going to look like. Again, the balustrade will be added, there'll be some kind of an urn that will be in the, in the center point, which is kind of right in here. The wall was built by Henry Rissin because he got tired of the smoke and the, the dirt coming down the Wharf Road when they were lifting wagons to the wharf with lumber. And so he, Bill had this wall built. So the, the wall is a little over eight feet high, and the idea really was to kind of create, to recreate this entry feature, clean this and repair the wall. And for safety reasons, we wanted to increase the visibility into the park. So as you can see here, we're, we're going to cut the wall, we're going to leave about six feet on either side of the entry, and then cut it down to three feet high, and then there's a wrought iron fence. So it'll, it'll feel safer when you're inside and it'll have better visibility for, you know, police and people, you know, walking through this place to be able to see into the park. So, this is kind of what it looks like at the entry, this is what it looks like at one end here. From the other side, again, we'll be kind of repairing this section and duplicating that on this side to make it look like it did. The door will be gone, we'll, we'll store that somewhere inside the mansion for historical preservation, but it'll be an open arch into the, into the garden. This is the arbor, and again, I, I had to go by photographs to get the proportions right because there wasn't really a whole lot to go by, other than the, some of the existing pieces that are in the garage of the wrist pin. For those who haven't been inside, the garage holds a lot of the artifacts that were found over the years that they collected when they were cleaning the garden and trying to restore the, the garden a long time ago, this was in the late seventies. So anyway, the arbor will look pretty much like it did, but it will be totally new. Some of the amenities that we're adding, there'll be some bollards to keep vehicles from driving into the park. There are some game tables, picnic tables, benches, receptacles for trash and recycling, and then there's a number of streetlight type fixtures, which I'll highlight here in another couple of slides, but those are some of the amenities. We'll have a couple of dog cleanup stations, we have a couple of drinking fountains and at least one of them, maybe both are, have little dog basins for dogs. So some of the additional new elements, again, just to kind of orient you here, this is where the bocce ball court is going. This is the new pathway that we, will be built. There's a new area of pavers that go around the sun dial. There's pavers that go around the reflecting pool. These are actually planting areas inside here, so the pavers kind of go in and out. There is a service entrance right here, which is where the bollards are. This is the existing step, stairway that goes down to the path that's already been done, and this is the existing ramp. Here's the entry arch. So the fencing in red is the new fencing, and it will replace all the chain link. There is some remaining chain link that will, will be down on the lower section of the mansion, that will stay. But all the new wrought iron fencing will be along this red line here. And it will tie across, there'll be two security gates that will be locked at night, one here and one at the top of the stairs, right here. The yellow circles are the locations for streetlights, and you can see they're kind of spread out and they light the area of the park. We're going to try to make sure that these are screened or shielded so they're not lighting into the riparian area, and of course, the neighborhood across the creek. This is roughly what the lights will look like laid out in terms of their, their light span. And again, the kind of oval, yellow oval here represents the screen or the, the shield of the, of the light. So, pretty good coverage, it'll definitely, you know, help make people feel a little safer walking through there. One of the input, some of the input that we had at the, one of the hearings was the addition of lights along the trail, again, from the handicap accessible ramp system that comes down to the creek. And so these would be lights that could attach to the guardrail that's there, and they kind of would, would help to get people to the bridge. We haven't really picked a light, this is something we're adding into the project, but some type of light that would mount onto the guardrail system, whether it's that or, you know, something a little more subtle, but it has to be really safe as far as vandalism and, and I, I think this one kind of fits the bill here, it looks like it's probably going to be the most durable, but we'll pick something that will work. As I mentioned, during the very first meeting that we had with the community, it was, this nature play idea was expressed. So, with the idea of nature play, if you're unfamiliar with it, is really using things that exist on the site to let kids be creative and kind of make their own playground. And so this is the idea that we kind of took and, and kind of ran with. What we're, the location, again, is, this is the observation area, these are the main stairway down. So there's a nice area here that's fairly flat, it's in the shade of the oak trees, these big circles are the canopy of the oak trees. And the idea is to use artifacts from the museum, I'm sorry, from the mansion that we have stored. And so things like the columns, those pieces of columns, some of the big, you know, pieces of different things that we found, the stepping stones and so forth, let the kids kind of make their play, you know, their own play. So this is a fairly, you know, good sized area. The slope, the hill, you know, kind of begins right about in here, so this is about as, as wide as this can be. Again, some of the artifacts, there's pieces of the columns, there's some really large columns from the wall out front that are gone. There's all kinds of stuff in, in the garage that we, that we can use. The area for the amphitheater is right in here and it's cut into this hillside. And the idea, again, is to kind of have a place for presentations, for, you know, discussions about the mansion or some of the other elements that we're, we're bringing into this, like the butterfly restoration. It would be a really neat place to have small concerts, you know, wedding venue perhaps and, and things like that. This is sort of what it would look like with the grand staircase coming down on one side, and then there's one, two, three, four levels of seating. So there's probably, I would guess, sixty to eighty people probably that could fit in the seated area, and then people up above, above the upper level looking down and so forth. This is kind of a cross section of what it would look like as it's built into the hillside. We're, we're going to try to get some kind of plaque or placards that will be similar to what's along East Cliff, you know, talking about the mansion, talking about the time period, the history of Capitola, what, what goes on to the placards, we haven't really, you know, come up with. Logically, there, there might be some that talk about, you know, the, the name of the park, the date of the construction of the, the mansion and so forth, talking about the nuns of St. Clair during their, their part, having placards that maybe describe the oak woodland restoration area and the butterfly habitat area, maybe, you know, a discussion of Rissin and his, his life and, and what he did for, you know, Capitola and so forth. And then some photographs of the interior of the mansion, things that we just looked at that, that most people have never seen. They would be located in a number of places, but, you know, possibly on the outside wall as you're entering from Wharf Road, along the walkway here, maybe talking about the, the nun, because that's their kind of area where the, the nuns of St. Clair had their buildings. Over here, you know, maybe talking about the mansion itself and so forth. So there's, there's a number of different locations, one possibly on the side of the building by that really neat window, and then one maybe talking about the interior as you're down on the, on the main level of the mansion. So, this is just kind of a detail of the bocce ball court. Someone asked about having a rotating art, you know, thing happening in, in this, this is a perfect place for the art in the park idea. And we do have, there's four pedestals that would look like this, which are basically copied from what was, you know, the original column that they used for the other parts of the garden. And these could be the place where we do some kind of rotating art or the center point of, of the, the art area. I've always felt that the, you know, the paint and the roof and, and everything that they've done to preserve the mansion, you know, was great, but it, it just seemed cold to me. It always seemed kind of lifeless, and I guess that's, that's part of a deserted mansion. But, the idea to kind of deal with that or to improve that is to put some kind of murals in the window. And my thought was to have, you know, some different types of, you know, musical themes or, you know, themes of the, you know, the roaring twenties. We're actually, nineteen twenty, we're a hundred and one years away from when this was built, so trying to honor the history and, and bring some life into the building, that's, that's what this was. Also, there's a couple of walls that exist where the red lines are, and these are the basement walls of what was, what's left of the nun's structures that were there. And so these are also places where we could conceivably have murals. This area is going to have a, a garden planted in here, but the mural could be above it, as you'll see. This area is where the game tables are, and again, this would be a great backdrop for some murals. This is what it kind of looks like now. These are the walls of the basement of the, one of the nuns of St. Clair's buildings. The mansion has a rich history of graffiti, by the way. Inside the building, you're going to see all kinds of stuff and it is pretty colorful, pretty interesting. My idea is to, again, kind of carry in a music theme and maybe have a muralist hired to, to do some type of wall murals that reflected some, you know, music or, you know, some kind of nice activity that, that fits the, fits the era. Another element that we brought into this, there's a part of a walkway that will have brass steps like this, which replicate the movements of the Charleston. I happened to see something like this in Napa on one of the streets, and it was, it was a different dance, but it was, it was a great idea and so it was something that we thought of that, that we could incorporate in here. And this, this could be something that somebody, we get a donor or a donation, you know, somebody to sponsor this particular thing. So if you're into dance, think about it. The planting concept, originally, we did this in two thousand and nineteen, Jennifer Colfer and myself worked on the planting. Many of the plants on the inside wall of the Wharf Road are plants that, and, and the ones that are also adjacent to the fountain and the pool resemble the historical plantings that were done in the original garden. We have an area for California natives on part of the slope and also in a little demonstration area. And we also have a number of places where we're using butterfly habitat plants. And then right next to the amphitheater, there's a location where we have a, an actual demonstration garden of the butterfly habitat. So on this slide, the butterfly habitat stuff is in the peach color, and here's that demonstration garden. But we've also spread out a number of places where we have, you know, nectar plants for butterflies. The red area is where we are going to try the roses. At the time when the roses were thriving, there was a lot more sun. The oak trees that are there now are huge, if you haven't been there a while, but we're going to give it a shot and, and try it, and I think we, we might be okay. The violets were something that another, in the last community meeting, someone suggested because of, of the history of people that were growing violets in the area. And so we, we have inserted some spots where we're going to try to use some violets and, and bring that in as well. And I think I got through it all, Steve, so if you want to...
Well done, Mike, well done, lots to cover. So that's our presentation. The recommendation tonight is to approve, reapprove the proposed conceptual plan for the Rissin Project and adopt a resolution authorizing the submission and application of the California State Parks for a second proposition sixty-eight park development grant, with the awarded funds going to this project. I will mention at this point that if we want to make changes to the conceptual plan at this point, that, you know, you want to see revisions to it before you approve that concept plan, we can do that. I would ask that we go ahead and approve the resolution if we can at this point, so we can complete our application. The application does not include, you know, the final plans, we discuss the project in general terms. So certainly, we can make changes to the project after we submit an application. And with that, I think Mike and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, can we stop sharing for a second?
Mike, can you hear that? Can you stop sharing?
I'm sorry, what?
Can you stop sharing your screen?
Sure. There we go.
Thank you so much. So, Council, I'd like to take this- Thank you so much. So council, I'd like to take this as two separate items this evening. The item on the agenda says to receive a presentation of the Rispin Park and approve a resolution authorizing the public works department to submit a grant application to California State Parks. So I'd like to take that as the first item and then we can then move on to the potential second item as in staff recommendations. So I want to start with if there's any questions in relation to item C regarding the grant application. Do we have any questions at the time? Councilmember Story.
Yes, I guess I'm a little unclear whether this is about the grant application or about the conceptual plan. But I did have a couple of questions and I'll just put them out there and Mayor, you can determine whether they're at the appropriate time. Steve and Mike, I think your conceptual plan looks really good. There were so many elements that I felt very attractive. I won't go through them, but just a couple of questions. Number one, I know this, the Rispin property is subject to a conservation easement. And I just wanted to ask that, you know, the conceptual plans and and all the ideas are consistent and compatible with that conservation easement on the property. And my second question, and I'll just take my answers after I'm done. And I know the Rispin property has been impervious to timelines for decades. But I wanted to ask, hopefully without jinxing it, that if the grant is fully funded, what kind of timeline are we looking for for completion of this project? Thank you.
So I can, I'll start with the conservation easement. The project is consistent with conservation easements that are on the property. The one area that we we swapped out, the conservation easement with the amphitheaters going and increased the area that we're no longer developing. So we are consistent with that. And then regarding a timeline, you know, right now we're probably the grant application is due in the middle of March. It's probably a six month review process for them to get back to us. That's pretty typical for these types of grants. In the meantime, we will be working on finalizing a plan set and figuring out some of these things probably need to go to an arts commission. Some of the things will be, will be part of what we bid out. So we'll be finalizing those plans. If everything comes together in six months, we may be ready to bid the project at that time. Construction's probably, you know, or a five month, six month project to construct it to.
Okay, questions from councilmember Bertrand?
Yeah, I was wondering, this is for our architect, Arnon. I was wondering if you could go back to the slide. There's another pathway that you proposed to put in there and then there was a gate. And I was just trying to understand some elevation issues. Because when you're walking down the path, there's the first turn from the top and you take a left turn there. And it seems like you look down onto what used to be, I believe, a laundry room. Quite an elevation drop. So I'm just trying to understand what's going on there.
So Mike pulled that up. That's where we're going to put the ramps from that elevation down to the level of the mansion, the front door.
Okay, so there are ramps, yeah, because it's like fifteen feet drop or something.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, okay, that helps me a lot. You know, I've walked there through that probably hundreds of times now because I do a lot of walking in this town. And I remember there was a place, a seat at that turn where a lot of people were sort of resting. Usually older people, they'd taken the hike up the, on the river or something like that. And now it's not available because there's a railing there. You know, just from the concept that, you know, some people like to rest at that spot, maybe to enjoy the view or maybe because they're a little tired from hiking up from the river. Just wanted to put that out there, something to think about. And then another question in terms of historic stuff, is that rather narrow stairway. Mike, is that going to be restored or just left as is? I think you know what I'm talking about.
Yeah, I really didn't talk about that. We haven't really done anything with that. It's not in bad shape other than the fact that it's pretty overgrown with ivy. And it could see, you know, conceivably be, if we're talking about the same one, that really narrow staircase, yeah.
Right.
It could be left as is. I mean, it's not a real safe. And just because it's so narrow, it doesn't meet any codes and we don't have any, we aren't proposing any railings or anything for it. But it is there.
Okay, great. And one other question, I don't play, you know, bocce ball or anything like that. But in a normal bocce ball court, is there a place for people to sit around and say, watch? Also, is there some way that, like a board for scorekeeping or something like that? Is that stuff to be even concerned about? I have no idea.
Well, there are a couple, there are benches that go kind of around the oval pathway. And there are at least two, if not three, that kind of, you know, look at the bocce ball court. So I guess that would be my answer to that one. I mean, we have a little bit of observation area for the players, I guess.
Okay, thanks, Mike.
Yeah.
Any questions at this time for Mr. Arnon or Mr. Desper? Council vice mayor Story, your hand is raised? No? Okay, I just had a couple of questions and this is kind of more like the long term impact. Has there even been just any discussion been had about after it's all said and done, what the fiscal impact would be on the city of Uptown? And what's within the bandwidth of the city?
We have looked at that. Certainly it adds more, more work for our park maintenance crew. At that time, we, I think, added a position when we opened the the Gregor Park and had anticipated, hopefully hadn't this open sooner than it has been. So there was a position added there. From a financial impact as far as cost to maintain it, besides, besides labor, there's, you know, the power costs are pretty minimal to keep those lights running. And we're hoping the vandalism will actually decrease at the site. We're spending quite a bit on that. We haven't done any further analysis than that, though.
Okay. And then in regards to signage, Mr. Arnon, you showed kind of cool signage like for the historical aspect. But what about other signage to get to and from the park, like from down, I'm just, I don't know if there's a specific term for like Nob Hill parking lot. Was there going to be any additional signage to point out the park?
As far as lighting?
Signage, sir.
Oh, signage. Well, I mean, as far as the signage, we have, you know, the locations that I kind of showed, the five or six locations were kind of, we didn't really think about the approach from Nob Hill, honestly, as far as how to get there. When, when the park is, when the gates are open, you'd have at the turn, you'd have, you know, a pretty good vision of what's going on. And then, you know, there could be another type of placard at that intersection, which is a great idea where we make that hairpin turn. Yeah.
Bear with me, I have several questions. My other question is about parking. So I understand there wouldn't be any parking on Wharf. Has there been any conversation with the property owners? I don't, can't remember their names, but of Nob Hill, if they're going to allow for public parking to access our park?
I think coming up with a parking agreement with, I think it's Red Street Property owns the Nob Hill Shopping Center may be difficult because I think they, they're required to have the amount of parking they have. There will be parking. Some will be quite limited over at the library. As always intended to kind of be the parking for the Rispin. Otherwise, it's going to be a park that you walk to. In all honesty, there isn't a great deal of ability to add parking anywhere short of purchasing some property, maybe adjacent to the library property, which is quite expensive at this point.
Okay. And from looking at the slide, am I understanding that the mansion itself wouldn't be open to the public? That's what the bars around it would be? And is that correct?
Right.
Okay.
The mansion is not really accessible and it's not really safe if you've ever been inside it. So it'd be great if we could do that, but maybe we take one step at a time and do the park. But yeah, that's why, you know, the placard's showing what it looked like at one time and possibly even what it looks like now to describe it. But no, the mansion would not be open.
Okay. And has there been any discussion about a paver project or memorial benches? About using the opportunities? Because I saw the language written in there of payers and we've done that for other areas in the city. Has there been any discussion about that at this time?
This was brought up at one of, I think, the second workshop we had back in December. It's something we could certainly do and kind of reimburse the city some of the costs. It's not something I think we could do to help fund the construction necessarily because it's something we probably need to have out. I know when we did the paver sales for the street scape down in the village, it was done as we were under construction so people could see it and kind of get an idea of what they're buying. The library's been a different case. We have had successful sale of payers at the library. But again, those were done independent of the construction budget. So that's something we can certainly look at as we move forward.
Okay, yeah, I noticed that the benches proposed in the conceptual review were metal. And I don't know that memorials, you could put a plaque on those metal benches. My, my last question is about, should we get the four hundred and eighty-two thousand dollar grant? There's a offset of two hundred K. Would we anticipate the project taking place if we get the grant, it would just kick off and then we would figure out the rest on our own or down the road? So let me rephrase that. Should we get the grant, would you start the work right away? Would you just begin work?
Well, obviously we would need to bid the project out and and what I explained to councilman Story was that it's probably about a six month period before we hear about the grant. And at that time, we'll refine the plans and figure out what we're going to bid out and what needs to go to the arts commission like that. If we do get the grant, hopefully we were able to roll pretty quickly and start moving the project out to bid and starting construction after that.
Okay, the reason I ask that is because city council will be setting our CIP goals and prioritizing our our budget for the next year. And if there's a two hundred thousand dollar difference, I, you know, that needs to come out of the general fund and council would have to prioritize that in order to complete the project. So that's why I ask.
I'm also hopeful we may have some funding, knock on wood, from the library project.
Oh, yeah, great point. Okay, so those are all my questions. So we can take it to the public for any comments or questions?
Mayor Brooks, I do not see anybody in the Zoom call with their hand raised and I don't see any emails from inside them.
Okay, so we'll bring this back for comments, council comments and deliberations. Do we have any comments from council at this time? Councilmember Peterson.
Yeah, I just want to thank staff. Thank you, Mike, and everyone who's put all their time into this. I'm really excited for this project. I've been thinking about it and talking about it for years now. And especially once the library is completed, it's going to be a really exciting addition to that corner for families to go and grab a book and go over to the, you know, this historical park. And I'm just really excited for it to open. We passed the Rispin Mansion just driving up and down Wharf Road when I was a kid. And so this is another one of those parts of Capitola where I have nostalgia for a place that I get to see every day where I actually live in. So thank you all for your work on this. I'm really looking forward to it. And while there may be continued conversation for the sake of getting us moving along, I would like to make a motion to approve the, let me see what the exact language is here. I'll say, for now, I'll just say to approve the staff recommendation.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a first and second. Are there any other comments from council? Councilmember Bertrand?
Yeah, I appreciate, Arnon, that you're thinking about making this a friendlier place. You know, your comment earlier about how the mansion sort of looks sort of, I'm not sure what your adjective was, but it sort of made me think about, I appreciate that viewpoint. This should be more alive. I think over the years it'll become quite a feature of importance to Capitola and many events that will take place there will add to the sense that it belongs to this community and it belongs to the residents. So I appreciate your view on that. Thank you.
Any other council comments? Okay, so I actually was able to attend the December meeting and there was some concern about the history of Mr. Rispin and and I was interested in learning more about that. There were some concerns that there was a, that he could have possibly been a racist or he had some sort of negative connotation of that directly affected Capitol. And I would be interested in learning more about that before we move forward with approving the conceptual review. Just to make sure, I'd be interested in having staff look into that. And so councilmember Peterson, if you would be if you would be willing to have a substitute motion that we approve the grant application and have staff come back to us with more information about Mr. Rispin before we approve the conceptual review.
Well, if I can clarify, I don't believe the conceptual review has anything to do with what we're going to be calling the park. Is that correct? Does the conceptual review, because I mean, if that's the concern, I mean, regardless of what we find out about Mr. Rispin, that history is a reality regardless of what we find out about it. And that's, I don't think that's going to change what we do at the park. It would be rather disappointing. And I have heard that. And unfortunately, that does seem to be the case for for a lot of properties throughout California historically. But unless the conceptual review specifically has to do with what we're going to be calling the park and including his name in it, I would like us to continue with the approval of the conceptual review. But yes, I would also like staff to come back with additional information so that we can consider the naming of the park at a future time. Can we get clarification on that from the staff if the conceptual review includes the name of the park?
So councilmember Peterson, so the conceptual review is independent of the name, you know, at this point, we're in front of you to have the design approved and to approve the grant application. We don't have a park that's about to open. So if we wanted to modify the name or choose a name, we have frankly, at least eighteen months to do that.
Okay, if that's the case, Mayor Brooks, if you're comfortable with it, then I would continue to hold my motion to accept the staff recommendation and request that staff return to us with additional information about the, what we have heard about Mr. Rispin so that we can continue to consider if renaming the park itself is something that would be appropriate.
Yeah, I'm the seconder and I agree with Peterson's addendum to the motion.
Okay, that's great. Thank you, councilmember. Okay, so we have a first and a second. Can I have a roll call, please?
Yes, councilmember Bertrand.
I agree.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson.
Aye.
Vice mayor Story.
Aye.
Mayor Brooks.
Aye. All right, that item passes unanimously. I appreciate all of your time, councilmembers. That brings us to item nine, adjournment. Thank you, city council. Thank you, staff. Thank you, participants and attendees for being here tonight. Please remember to find the good in others and in yourself. Good night.